Good evening. We need amplified sound in the room. That was a test. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I now call to order this June tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of Lancaster City Council. A few reminders at the top of the meeting. This meeting and its participants are being recorded this evening. Please take a moment to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. For everyone's information, there is a Spanish language translation available this evening, if you should need it, in the back of the room with Zyra. During this meeting, there will be opportunities for public comment. The first general public comment period is for residents that have registered in advance to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Residents may also comment on individual items as part of our legislative agenda. That's section nine on the agenda behind us. Finally, a second public comment period will be at the end of the agenda for any speakers wishing to address council. All speakers will be reminded to begin with their name and block of residence for our meeting minutes. Please be advised that public comment is not a question and answer period. All comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. To keep time, the light that's here in front of me will turn green when a speaker begins. It will turn yellow when there is one minute remaining, and it will blink red when their time has been expended. After three minutes, they will be asked to end their comments. I appreciate everyone's cooperation to maintain order and equal time this evening. Speakers addressing City Council and the members of the audience will be expected to conduct themselves in an orderly manner and remain respectful of others. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Harris, would you please call the role of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Med?
Here.
Mr. Roya?
Here.
Mr. Gleese?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Hirsch?
Here.
And President Baker?
Here.
Our next item is the approval of the minutes of the May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Are there any council comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Roya?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye.
We will move then to proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition. This evening, we have several. We begin with resolution number forty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Harris, if you would please.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster recognizing June two thousand and twenty-five as Immigrant Heritage Month and June twentieth as World Refugee Day in the city of Lancaster and noting the contributions of immigrants and refugees to creating the culture and economy of Lancaster.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is originated by Counselor Ahmed. Counselor Ahmed?
Thank you, Council President. It is an honor to introduce this year's two thousand and twenty-five Immigrant Refugee, Immigrant Heritage Month and World Refugee Day resolution, but we would not be remiss without thinking about the current state that many of our refugee and immigrant neighbors find themselves in. Although we are seeing challenges at the federal level and uncertainties, ends to refugee programs, travel bans that affect families, including mine, this year, we want to reflect on the challenges that our refugee families and immigrant neighbors are still facing and how we as a community can help celebrate their importance and diversity in our community. Because many of them are still waiting to bring their loved ones, waiting to bring their wives, their husbands, their elderly parents, their children. And although there is uncertainty now in what will happen with the refugee program, what will happen with TPS, what will happen with travel bans, it is important that they know that we are still a welcoming city and we are still here for our refugee and immigrant neighbors. Thank you, Council President. And I believe we have Ramucho Karakaze here to speak on the resolution.
One moment. Any special trick DJ that we need for... Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, I know taking origin now, so good. My name is Ramucho Karakaze. I'm a resident of Lancaster City. I live in Corrus Street. I am U.S. citizen. I'm a former refugee. I want to thank Lancaster that they've been supporting for refugees and immigrants when sometimes it doesn't feel safe to be called refugee or immigrant. We all know now that current administration, it's keep attacking the name of refugee and immigrant. We know what is happening in Los Angeles, in California. We know what is happening around us. As a former refugee, I still don't feel that I overcome anything. I remember me coming here to celebrate my citizenship. Does this matter for now for me, or that can be taken away? Some refugees and immigrants communities are feeling scared and worried for what is happening right now. I want to thank city of Lancaster to pass the resolution to reorganize the contribution of refugee and immigrant in economically, culturally, socially, and everything. However, we need to see elected officials making statement that refugees are safe here and immigrants are safe here and welcome and to highlight their contribution. We know we pay taxi. We know we work. We know we're social worker. We know we're health ed worker and give care for the people who really need it. We are in every field. We perform as American. Except the document, we have ability. We are just a human who can do everything, who dream and who want to achieve. We want to see elected officials highlighting that because they're anti-immigrant, anti-refugee rhetoric or speeches which are very discouraging and concerning. We would like to see, as you have been very welcoming, very thankful for Lancaster City administration, how they have been like passing some policies to protect us. However, we need you more now. I'm with people here from the community who want to come and sit here, want to feel hope that they belong here and are very happy to be here. That's my dad in between. That's the community leaders from female, who present a lot of females in Lancaster, but they're worried. The mom there, she wanted to go to Rwanda to get married to see her son getting married, but she's worried to travel because she doesn't trust. If she came back, can she make it? She had been here in Lancaster for four years, but she's not a citizen yet. This is a concern happening for the Lancaster resident. I thank you very much for everything you're doing, but also I agree that we need you more as resident of Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I believe Zyra from the City Language Access Program is also going to be speaking.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. This is a change.
Yes.
So, thank you, Ramucho, for the insights of the many challenges that are being faced by refugee and immigrant community. I am here to provide a small update on how the Office of Language Services supports our refugee and immigrant community, especially our neighbors who might be learning English in accessing city services and programs and services. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and to share the progress and purpose of the Office of Language Services, an initiative rooted in equity access and community connection. This office was initiated in two thousand and eighteen as a program of the Office of Neighborhood Engagement under the mayoral strategic plan and officially instituted as an office in two thousand and twenty-three under the Department of Neighborhood Engagement to foster greater connection between city government and the communities we serve. Thank you for this honor and opportunity to lead this office and to lead our city in being more equitable and inclusive for all. Since its official formal launch, the Office of Language Services has made meaningful strides to ensure language is never a barrier to civic engagement, safety, or access to vital services. Here are some of the work we've done. We implemented the Propia One platform, a robust on-demand phone and video interpretation platform, offering access to over three hundred professional interpreters in more than three hundred languages, twenty-four seven. We have trained staff across all departments to effectively use the communication tools, empowering every city team member to engage with residents in their preferred language with confidence and professionalism. A centralized service request procedure was also developed to streamline internal requests for language services, improving efficiency, tracking, and resource management. And I have to thank our communications team, who has been so supportive in helping me implement technology and procedures. The office has launched a dedicated internet page for staff. The centralized hub includes our mission and vision, language service request links, Propia One access, even a demo video is in there, step-by-step usage guides as well. We also maintain a team of professionally trained bilingual English and Spanish staff members who are available to provide immediate in-house translation and interpretation services. Those team members are myself and Abraham Milano, who has joined the Neighborhood Engagement Team and is such a vital person in our team. Let me share some brief impact data from the year two thousand and twenty-four. Propia received seven hundred seventy-seven calls throughout the year two thousand and twenty-four, serving residents in twenty-three different languages. We've responded to a hundred and twenty-nine high language access requests, and we've completed in-house Spanish translations, totally more than ten thousand words in flyers, social media communications, and program information. And we continue to see strong and increasing use across departments. All departments are utilizing our tools and services. And a more robust report to council will be provided later this year. Beyond service delivery, the Office of Language Services conducts ongoing research onto local demographics and language trends and community needs, builds relationships with cultural organizations and community partners, and actively collaborates with other municipal departments to ensure we're continuously improving the accessibility and quality of language services. This is not a one-day work. It continues to improve and grow over time. This work is not simply technical. It is relational. It's about showing our refugee and immigrant neighbors that they belong. Thank you, Ramucha. That their voices matter and that their access to information and services is not conditional on language ability. On behalf of the Office of Language Services, I want to express a deep gratitude to the mayor and city council for your continued commitment to this mission. Together, we're making Lancaster a more inclusive, connected, and equitable city for all. Thank you for the opportunity and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you very much, Zyra. Are there any additional public comments on the resolution? I did that backwards, but any council comments on the resolution? Thank you. I'll just say again, thank you so much for being here and highlighting the fact that we need to be continually affirming of our desire to be a welcoming city and that you do belong here. So, thank you. And I think that the Language Access Program is one of many ways that we can highlight the fact that when everyone has access to city services and city government, that means that they can feel a part of a community. So, thank you. Any additional public comment? Again, I'll say that again. Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Roya?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye. Thank you.
Council President, we do have a resolution copy to give to the community leaders who joined, and if you guys would like to join for a photo at this time?
We will. I think we're going to do the photos on that end of the dais. As we work through these resolutions of recognition, I'll just remind folks, if you are here for a particular item, you're welcome to excuse yourself after, but you're also welcome to stay. I'll also remind everyone, because of this temporary audio setup, to please speak extra clearly and extra close to the microphones, both members of council and members of the audience who may be giving comments. We will move to our next item on this part of the agenda, which is resolution number forty-two, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Harris?
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster recognizing June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, as Juneteenth in the city of Lancaster and calling upon all Lancastrians to honor the dignity, culture, and contributions of African Americans to the history and life of the city of Lancaster.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. This is originated from Counselor Craig. Counselor Craig?
Thank you, Council President. It has been my great honor to be able to introduce this resolution of Juneteenth for the last few years. So, I'm going to read the resolution as it has been written. The road to freedom has been arduous for Africans, and the important work of equality continues today. And historically, historically, due to its location along the Mason-Dixon line, Lancaster County played a significant role in the freedom of enslaved Africans by way of the Underground Railroad. And Lancaster was home to a number of prominent black and white abolitionists who advocated for freedom for all Africans. And according to the United States Census Register, Slave Register, all Africans living in Lancaster were free by eighteen fifty. And on January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, declaring that all enslaved Africans held in the states then in rebellion shall then, shall be then, henceforth, and forevermore free, and prompting all enslaved Africans to demand their freedom. And word traveled to the edge of the nation slowly, but made it to Galveston, Texas, the westernmost Confederate state, where General Granger Redd allowed the Emancipation Proclamation on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, sharing that slavery had been abolished. And this day came to be known as Juneteenth and was first honored by the very next year in Texas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-six, with a jubilant, hopeful celebration filled with picnics, music, prayer within the black community. And Juneteenth celebrations take place across the nation each year in honor of its resilience of the black community and in homage to all Africans who bravely paved the way for freedom in America. And forty-nine states and the District of Columbia recognized Juneteenth as a holiday or a observance, according to Pennsylvania, which adopted Juneteenth National Freedom Day as a state holiday in two thousand and nineteen. And President Joe Biden signed Juneteenth National Independence Day Act in two thousand and twenty-one, the day, making the day a federal holiday. The city of Lancaster celebrated Juneteenth as a government holiday for the first time in two thousand and twenty-three. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city of, the city, by the council of the city of Lancaster that June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five be celebrated as Juneteenth in the city of Lancaster, and all Lancastrians are invited to reflect upon the spirit of the day, embrace the beauty of the diversity, and pledge to honor the dignity, culture, and achievement of Africans in every sphere of life in the city and Commonwealth and nation. So, that is the resolution as it is written. And like I said, it's been my honor to have introduced this for the last few years.
Counselor Craig, thank you very much for reading that into our record. I will make mention that we will celebrate Juneteenth at a flag raising at City Hall on June nineteenth. And I believe that on that day, Counselor Ahmed, you will be there to present that resolution to them as written. Thank you. Any additional council comments on the resolution? Comments from the public on the resolution? Oh, Mr. Dastra. Mr. Dastra? Good evening.
Good evening. Tony Dastro, Seventy-eight block, New Holland Avenue. Juneteenth is an important holiday to celebrate. Lancaster does have a lot of great abolitionists. And just if anybody in the room or watching wants to learn more about the history of Lancaster's involvement in the Underground Railroad, Bethel AME, which I am a member and actor in their Living the Experience show. It happens once a month, not July, but the next show will be in August, the first Saturday. We'd love to see more people come see the show. It's a great time. I play Thaddeus Stevens. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments from the public on the resolution? Hearing none. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Roya?
Aye.
Mr. Gleese?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye.
We now move to, under the same iden of the agenda, resolution number forty-three, two thousand and twenty-five. Mr. Harris?
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster recognizing June two thousand and twenty-five as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, and Asexual Pride Month in the city of Lancaster and encouraging all people to work to advance the cause of equality and towards achieving a safe community that appreciates its diversity in all its forms for generations to come. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, members of council. It's been my honor to, again, originate and introduce this resolution marking June as Pride Month in the city of Lancaster. In a time where it feels like everything is on fire sometimes, we need to recognize those who seem to be most under attack. And so, I feel we are doing that in this meeting. And I would like to add to that, that our LGBTQ plus youth, in particular, our trans youth are under attack in this country. So, I would dedicate this resolution this evening particularly to members of that community and all who love and support them to say that we also support you. I am, as a woman who represents the B of the LGBT, it is, I recognize my relative safety in this community, but also my place as a part of it. And so, it's important that we recognize that in June and all around, in all parts of the year, and celebrate our differences and also recognize the dignity of every member of our community. So, thank you. I will also say that... I will also say that, should council vote to pass this resolution this evening, I will be presenting this to Lancaster Pride Organization at the Pride Month Celebration on June twenty-eighth. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public? Mr. Dastra?
I am also glad to see, Tony Dastra, seven hundred block, New Holland Avenue. I'm also glad to see this, because, and I mean, this can be said about the first resolution as well. With the, with the federal government turning over everything, trying to erase people from our country, removing transgender individuals from the military, it's just good to know that Lancaster City supports people.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on the resolution? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Kalis?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye. Thank you.
We will now move into the public, our first public comment period in our agenda. As a reminder, this is reserved for residents who contacted the city clerk prior to this meeting to request the opportunity to address council. Duration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and your block of residence for our meeting record. I'll also make note that you can move that microphone up and down as you need to, for those that need it higher or lower. Mr. Harris, do we have speakers for this period?
We do, Madam President. First is Scott White, Whitekettle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Scott Whitekettle. And, hold on one second. I reside at four six two Fremont Street, directly behind Colton Park. I have been living at this address for a year and four months, and it has been nothing but a nightmare. When I walk up Fremont Street on my way home from work, there are always a dozen or so individuals sitting on the park wall with open alcohol containers, smoking marijuana, and/or nodding out high on drugs. There are concrete pathways running through the park that converge in a circle of benches in the middle, and I sit back and watch drug deals go down there frequently. Almost every night, there are people screaming and yelling or arguing and fighting out on the street in front of my house, either going to or coming from Colton Park, and I routinely get woken up at all hours of the night while sleeping for work. There are also homeless people in tents practically in my backyard, constantly begging for money. And a few weeks ago, a nine-year-old boy and a twelve-year-old boy were both arrested for armed robbery. And then there's the event that persuaded me to speak here this evening. On the night of Saturday, May thirty-first, just before ten P.M., someone literally and physically kicked my front door in. At first, I couldn't exit my domicile because of all the splintered wood dangling and the deadbolt being so bent. Once I cleared the debris, I stepped out on my front porch, and there was a group of about five people heading away from my house. They stopped on the concrete slab at the top of the steps leading down into the park. All were visibly drunk, arguing and yelling, and two of them were trying to fight one another, but being held apart. I went back for my cellphone and called the police, but unfortunately, it took them over twenty minutes to arrive, and by then the individuals were gone. I am absolutely fed up, to say the least. My neighbors are fed up, and the people who legitimately use Colton Park for its intended purposes are fed up. Children can't even safely play there anymore. So as you can see, I and my neighboring community are in desperate need of a stronger police presence and/or routine police patrols in and around Colton Park. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your words, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mr. Whitekettle. Because you've pre-registered for comment, I do have your contact information, so I'll be reaching out to you directly with, for some additional information and with follow-up. Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker for this period.
Next is Michael Hess.
Mr. Hess, good evening. Yeah, feel free to move that up.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Michael Hess, and I live at the five hundred block of Fairview Avenue in Lancaster, PA. I've been a resident here for five and a half years, and during this time, I've grown increasingly concerned about public safety due to the heavy volume of traffic on the section of Fairview Avenue, south of Wah Bank Road. Here is where it becomes a two-way street. This stretch of Fairview Avenue serves as an important access point for Lancaster Rec Center, the former Price Elementary School, and Brandon Park, all of which are heavily used by my neighborhood. Additionally, this section includes a large bus stop for children who previously walked to Price Elementary, now to be picked up for school at their new location. The crosswalk at the intersection of Rollridge Avenue and Fairview Avenue is one of the busiest in all of Prospect Heights, particularly during the school year. Foot traffic to the Rec Center, Brandon Park, and the playground and basketball courts remain significantly high year-round, however. It's also important to note that many of the residents in this neighborhood come from underserved backgrounds, including single parents and lower, lower-income households. As a result, there's a higher concentration of pedestrians, many of whom might have limited time or resources to raise awareness to these safety concerns. Aside from its community role, Fairview Avenue is heavily trafficked by automobiles, many of which speed through the area as it serves as a gateway road to other parts of the city. In my time living directly across from the Rec Center, I've witnessed numerous hit-and-runs of parked cars, as well as near misses involving children and pets. Pedestrians rarely have drivers yield to them at crosswalks. And due to the narrowness of the street, vehicles often cannot pass in opposite directions without having to pull over and yield to one another. This only heightens the chaotic and unsafe environment for both drivers and pedestrians. In my opinion, without intervention, it's only a matter of time before a pedestrian is seriously injured. I respectfully ask that the city council consider implementing safety measures to address these concerns. Possible solutions could include making the section of Fairview Avenue one-way, as the remainder is, or installing speed bumps at critical intersections like Fairview and Rollridge, or Fairview and Hager, or other similar measures to calm traffic. Please consider the safety of some of our most vulnerable community members. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Mr. Hess, thank you very much. Similarly, I have your contact information, so I will definitely be following up with you with some next steps and other resources, including our traffic commission. Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker for this period.
Next speaker is Jonah Reber.
Is Jonah Reber here? Don't see them. I'll call again at the end of this public comment period. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Susie Torres.
I did see a submission for Susie Torres, but Ms. Gomez, I do believe it might have been you based on the email address and address, so. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Susie Gomez, one hundred block north Reservoir Street.
Just be real close to the microphone. Thank you.
All right. Just basically here to say, there are many uncertainties, residents, taxpayers, and citizens, along with now refugees, that have concerns till this day, twenty twenty-five, in the city of Lancaster. Our streets southeast have not been paved, paying high cost for contaminated water, taxes rising, jobs, housing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I wanted to point out, for the appointment of members to Lancaster City's Ethics Board, one in particular day, I remember, Amanda, you stated that the highest votes would be admitted, at least, so whoever has the highest votes for the appointee from the public list of nominees, if I, if I'm not mistaken. And I just wanted to advise that I did see Mr. Randolph Hernandez having fifty-nine people that nominated him in, and he has yet to get a phone call, an email, or any type of response. So I wanted to make that clear for the record. And to the mayor and council, if we have this protest that we're hearing, do you have anything that is going to be, you know, anything that would control the situation if it gets bad, as it did, and we don't want to see a replay of twenty twenty with the Black Lives Matter? So hopefully, if it is true, it is a peaceful riot, and all borders are secured, and we do not have to see out-of-control people, you know, like we did last time, such as Arroyo, I believe, Bakay, and Izzy was a part of that intensified situation when we had a riot in the city of Lancaster. There are many concerns in this city, and I just hope that, I don't even hope anymore. I think you guys have done enough.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Just to clarify, and we'll have the appointments of members to the Ethics Commission later on in our agenda. The, the nominees were selected for interviews by a ranked-choice voting system of members of council. So members of council reviewed all submissions and nominations, and then submitted their top two choices, and then the top five of those vote-getters were selected for interviews for our three appointments that we'll make this evening. Mr. Harris, are there any additional comments for this first period?
There are none, Madam President.
Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is reports requested by council. I don't believe there are any this evening, so we'll now remove to our reports of committees of council. These were the meetings held on June second, twenty twenty-five. We begin with the Public Safety Committee, Council Diaz.
The Safety Committee did not meet.
Thank you, Council Diaz. Public Works Committee, Councilor Hirsch.
Thank you, Council President. The Public Works Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Economic Development Committee, Councilor Ahmed.
Thank you, Council President. The Economic Development Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Councilor Arroyo.
Thank you, Council President. The Finance Committee did not meet.
Thank you. Community Planning Committee, Council Craig.
Thank you, Council President. Community planning did meet, and we reviewed to review historical commission recommendations for one oh one South Queen, and also Administration Resolution Forty-seven, authorizing submission of the community grant block, the community development block grant and annual action plan.
Thank you very much, Council Craig. And Personnel Committee, Council Kalist.
Thank you, Madam President. The Personnel Committee did meet on June second, and review a nomination for appointment to the Shidree Commission, and nominations for reappointment to the Civil Service Board. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Council Kalist. We'll now move into our legislative agenda. The first item on that agenda is the appointment of members to Lancaster City Ethics Commission. Again, I'll repeat myself. We received numerous nominations for the Ethics Commission. Two members of the commission are appointed by the city controller. Two members were appointed by the mayor. Those folks have been selected already. Then council did their work for, to, to make their nominations. Council members reviewed all additional submissions, and then sent their top two choices to me. And in a ranked-choice voting system, the top five vote-getters were, were asked to come in for interviews before council. Those interviews took place on May twenty-seventh, and our previous council meeting in June. At this time, we, I will hear nominations for appointment to the Ethics Commission.
Council President.
I'm going to acknowledge Councilor Craig first, and then Councilor Ahmed. Council Craig.
I would like to nominate Christopher, Christopher Salt. Salt. I know, I butchered his name.
Do we have a second for the nomination of Christopher Salt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Craig, any comments on this, this appointment?
I was just very impressed with Christopher, Mr. Salt, overall. His view on life and his experience and background.
Thank you very much. Council Craig, I would agree with you. I thought Mr. Salt was particularly well, well-suited for this position. And he was also, among all of the applicants, affirmed that they are residents of the city, that they had not held any political position, political action committee position, in the past year as well. And his, his background in fair trade, I thought, was particularly interesting, so. Any additional council comment? We'll, we'll take these one at a time, because we do have to hear three, so I'll hear up to at least three motions, but we're going to take them individually. So are there any comments from the public on this particular motion?
Councilor Craig, can you give me something about Christopher Salt's background that you liked?
Ms. Gomez, a public comment isn't necessarily a question-answer period, so I would not want you to use all of your time if you have more to say. And then I'll give Councilor Craig a opportunity to answer, if she wishes.
No, yeah, I just, I just wanted to hear her. Yeah, that's fine.
Council Craig, if you wish.
Sure. His work with fair trade, and his work with the Ten Thousand Villages, and what he does, what, I mean, he's been a ton of places, where he has been in control of and in charge of helping people sell different products in their own country and out of the country. So that's one of the things that impressed me the most about him, and being able to mix and communicate with all nationalities of people.
Thank you, Council Craig. I'll also add that, and then the commission, or the committee meeting is online and available for anyone to review, but Mr. Salt also actually formed an ethics commission essentially in the fair trade organization. So he has a background in forming an ethics commission, which is important for our first round of nominees. Any additional public comment on this motion?
Tony Dastra, seven hundred block, New Holland Avenue. I also think Christopher Salt will be a great addition to the Ethics Commission, but I do request that, for the record, it stated whereabouts in the city these residents do live. Ms. Byrd and I, when we were on the Ethics Subcommittee for the Home Rule Study Commission, were very intent on adding language that at the very end, appointments will be made with consideration to a commission membership, membership that reflects the city's diversity in regards to race, color, creed, religion, gender, familial status, sexual orientation, national origin, gender identity, age, disability, and geographic location of residents. For that reason, I just request that, for the record, roughly where they're about, by quadrant.
Is quadrant okay?
That's perfectly fine.
Mr. Salt lives in the northeast.
Thank you.
I will endeavor to find any additional nominees as we go. All right. Any additional public comment on this nomination? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Kalis?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye.
All right. We have two additional appointments to make, and I will hear another motion. Ms. Councilor Ahmed, you had motioned. I will give you preference.
Thank you, Council President. I motion to appoint Paul Colbreth to the Ethics Commission.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilor Ahmed, any additional words you'd like to say?
I was very impressed with Mr. Colbreth's extensive volunteer and professional capacities in which he served at the Boys and Girls Club, as well as Thaddeus Stevens, and I feel that he will bring a unique and diverse perspective to the Ethics Commission, which is important.
Thank you, Council Ahmed. Any additional council comments on that motion? From the public? Oh. And you asked about geographic location, and I will try to find that as I go through here.
Tony Dastra, seven hundred block, New Holland Avenue, just to help out. I believe he lives in the southeast.
I believe that is the case.
And so thank you for that.
Thank you. Sorry, there's a long list, and they're not labeled with the names, so thank you. Any additional comments from the public on the motion? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med?
Aye.
Mr. Royo?
Aye.
Mr. Kalis?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz? Mr. Hirsch?
Aye.
And President Baker?
Aye.
And council members, we have an additional appointment to make. I will hear a motion.
Council President, if I may, I'd like to nominate Erica Molina Potter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Erica Molina Potter.
Is the second there?
I'm sorry, it was Council Craig.
Thank you.
Make sure everybody has your mics on as you're motioning and seconding. Council Hirsch?
I was, you know, impressed with Erica's background in the legal world, and this, particularly, I was impressed by-
Make sure everybody has your mics on as you're motioning and seconding. Council Hirsch.
I was, you know, impressed with Erica's background in the legal world, and particularly, I was impressed by a story she told, in which she talked about a time where she kind of had to admit that she made a mistake, but felt better about bringing that to light, as opposed to, you know, hiding it or trying to kind of brush it under the rug. That, to me, communicates integrity. And the one comment I want to make, just about her, you know, not necessarily being like a lifelong resident of the city, I actually think we need some of that perspective on this commission, because I think having people that can kind of view things through a different lens, I think that's important. And in the same way that I think it's really important, I was particularly impressed with Mr. Colbreth, you know, all the volunteer capacities he's had, and I think that, in the same way, you know, having somebody that contrasts that, I think both perspectives are really valuable.
Thank you very much, Council Hirsch. I would also add that, I want to say that all five of the folks that came in before council, I was very impressed with, and I think that we had a number of great nominees. And so, the selection of three is by nature of what we're required to do, but I think that they were all really outstanding. For Ms. Molina Potter in particular, I appreciated that she does legal work with CWS, and I think that that's an important asset to have on the Ethics Commission. Yes, thank you. Any additional council comments on this motion? From the public.
Good evening.
Good evening. Griffin Durling, 500 Block of North Plum Street. And I'm chiefly here to support the Councilor Ahmed's resolution for Immigrant Heritage Month and World Refugee Day, but I'm also very pleased to hear that Erica's been nominated for the Ethics Commission. I'm actually her supervisor, and I was the one who kind of nudged, turned the direction of the Ethics Commission. I'm very pleased to hear her nominated. She is a person of the highest integrity. She treats our clients, our community members, our neighbors with the utmost dignity and respect. As a first-generation daughter of immigrants from Colombia, she has a unique perspective on the immigrant experience in a city of immigrants. I think she'd be a terrific addition to the Ethics Commission, and I applaud her nomination. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Grant Sprunger, 500 Block of St. Joseph's Street.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I'm very happy to be considered, but also hearing the background of all of the candidates that were interviewed. I am happy that there are people that were chosen that were of diverse backgrounds, that have a lot to offer to the Ethics Commission. I'm excited for the task at hand that they have to guide this city. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Sprunger. Any additional comments from the public on the motion? And Mr. Dastra, Ms. Molina Potter appears to live in the northwest. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ahmed.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Sorry, Ms. Diaz.
That was an "I."
Okay. Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Bakay.
Aye. Thank you to the members of council for endeavoring to create this process that did not exist before, and thank you to all of our nominees, applicants, and appointees on the Ethics Commission. Now, the true work begins, so we look forward to having you convene and hearing more from you as you do your work. So, thank you. The next item on our legislative agenda are nominations for appointments to others' boards, commissions, or authorities. I turn that over to Council Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll make a motion to appoint Marley Sayoda Bontrager to the Shade Tree Commission for a term from June 10th, 2025, to December 31st, 2029. And to reappoint Lloyd Henry, Donald Palmer, and Tene Darby to the Civil Service Board for terms from July 31st, 2025, to July 31st, 2029.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for appointments. As a reminder, members of council, we heard from our Shade Tree Commission applicant at our committee meeting, and the others are reappointments. Are there any additional council comments on the nominations? From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ahmed.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Bakay.
We will move to our next item on the agenda. Just want to briefly mention that there was an indication that there was Spanish translation needed this evening, and so if anyone needs that, Zyra is here for that, just in case. So, I want to make sure that that was being utilized, if it was needed. So, thank you. Our next item are our heritage conservation and historic district items. Mr. Harris.
Consider the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission and Historical Architectural Review Board for improvements to properties within the heritage conservation and historic districts. First is the Lancaster County Convention Center Authority, Swan Property Holdings LLC. Owners of 101 North, 101 South Queen Street, proposed demolition of two rear roof dormers to allow new construction. And Lancaster County Convention Center Authority, Swan Property Holdings LLC. Owners of 101 South Queen Street, proposed construction of a three-story circulation tower and two rooftop decks on the building's east elevation, and both of those were recommended for approval by the Historical Commission. And last is Peter Douglas, owner of 218 Howard Avenue, requests replacement of windows and the front entry door, and construction of a third-floor rear addition, and that application was recommended for approval by the Historical Architectural Review Board.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Was that Councilor Arroyo?
Yes.
To clarify, is your motion to approve items A, B, and C?
Correct.
Okay. And the second was also to do that?
A, B, and C.
Thank you very much. All right. Council Craig, any additional notes on these items?
Not anything to add. The C is pretty straightforward. They're going to replace, they need to replace windows and a front door entry, as well as a third-floor rear addition. And 101 South Queen is development of the Swan, the old Swan Hotel, that is going to be developed into an Airbnb with 11, 10 or 11 units. And I don't think anybody's here for that, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Council Craig. And to clarify, I think the architect and the firm was here, they mentioned Airbnb, but it was an Airbnb-style hotel.
Yes.
Thank you. So, not a licensed Airbnb.
No.
Correct.
And Betsy is here, a senior planner.
Great.
For any...
I was looking for the gentleman that was here last week.
Members of council, while you're working your way up there, are there any additional comments that you have, or clarification that is needed from Betsy on these items? Councilor Ahmed.
Council President, thank you. After hearing the presentation at our committee meeting, I do think this would be a great addition to the tourism industry here in Lancaster, and also complement the Convention Center, which is right next door.
Thank you. Additional council comments? Thank you. From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ahmed.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Bakay.
Our next item we move into is resolutions. The first one being Resolution Number 44, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster approving a flag raising on February 2nd, 2026, to acknowledge Black History Month brought forth by the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP.
Motion to approve? Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselors, what we have before us is an approval for a flag raising, well in advance. We love an organization that plans ahead. The NAACP Lancaster branch has requested to have a flag raising at City Hall to mark Black History Month in February of 2026. Any additional council comments on the resolution? From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ahmed.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Bakay.
Aye. That will take us to our next resolution, Resolution 45, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster approving the Juneteenth flag raising on June 19th, 2026, to acknowledge the emancipation of African-Americans brought forth by the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, counselors, this is over a year in advance, but again, we appreciate the organization of the NAACP of getting their approvals in on time. This is for a flag raising to mark Juneteenth, June 19th of 2026. Any additional council comments? From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ahmed.
Aye.
Mr. Arroyo.
Aye.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Bakay.
Aye. Thank you, counselors. And just a brief note, if your organization wishes to do a flag raising at City Hall, please make sure you submit your application to do so, at least 120 days in advance. All right. Our next item is Resolution Number 46, 2025. Mr. Harris.
A resolution of the council of the city of Lancaster authorizing the mayor to submit the 2025 Annual Action Plan, Year Five of the city's 2021 to 2025, five-year consolidated plan, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The submission includes a projected use of funds for the Community Development Block Grant Program during the 2025 program year.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council Craig?
Thank you, Council President. As we were reading the resolution, I saw Ms. Geyser making her way to the microphone, so if anybody has any questions, they can surely ask her.
Thank you. Rebecca, good evening, and thank you for being with us at our committee meeting to thoroughly review the action plan. If you have anything additional to add tonight?
Certainly. I have nothing additional to add, but glad to take any questions.
Members of council?
Council President.
Councilor Arroyo.
Just an FYI, I'll be abstaining from the vote, just because my employer is mentioned in the action plan, but fully support it otherwise.
Thank you very much. Any additional council comments on the action plan? I'll just say, Rebecca, you and your team have put together, it always amazes me how your team puts together this plan with a little less every year, but still manages to do just as much, if not more, every single year. So, your creativity and your commitment to this work, and your team's creative and commitment to this work is appreciated and seen. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Bakay.
Council President, I would also like to add the thoroughness of the presentation. I mean, thorough to the point where there is hardly any questions afterwards, because you, I mean, you crossed every T and dotted every I.
Thank you, Council Craig.
Any additional council comments?
Council President.
Council Hirsch.
Thank you. Just want to echo my comment that I made at the committee meeting, which is that this pot of money can be allocated to a lot of different things. You know, know this from my background, working at the county level with the CDBG grant. The city continues to commit it to housing, you know, affordable housing and critical repair, and I think that that's really admirable.
Thank you. Comments on the resolution from the public?
Good evening. Good evening. Irene Grievous, 400 Block of Weston Avenue. For four years now, I've been asking for these grants that are apparently available. None of my tenants, or myself, that I've been coming here for almost four years, have been granted. So, I would like to know, where are these grants going, Ms. Geyser? And why have my applications been denied, Ms. Geyser? Or anyone from City Council?
Ms. Grievous, do you have additional comments? I want to make sure you use your time if you need it, and then I would be happy to respond to your question.
Yes. I have applied for the LED program numerous times, not me, my tenants have, and they've been ignored, delayed, or denied. These grants are supposedly available. None have been available to me or my tenants, yet my property still remains condemned in four years. So, where are all these grants going? If it, with all these critical repair programs that are available, with millions of dollars that are available, why aren't they being utilized to residents? And I'm not just referring to myself, I'm referring to other residents on Manna Street that have not been afforded the ability to even apply, yet their properties were taken to the property reinvestment board, and obviously blighted, and taken over by investors. So, with all these critical repair programs, why aren't they being used to residents that really need it? Those are my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grievous. To answer your question, a couple things. The critical repair program isn't comprised of millions of dollars, it's a few hundred thousand dollars. The, many of the programs within this budget are for owner-occupied dwellings, and if there is a tenant, the landlord is required to back up with some funds. So, it's not necessarily that you would be unqualified, or your tenants would not be qualified, but there are different qualifications. So, thank you. Any additional comments from the public on the resolution? Ms. Gomez.
I just want to piggyback on what Irene said. Yes, there's lots of residents being delayed, ignored, and denied. My father in particularly, who is an owner-occupant, and me, myself. We are not given the opportunity, nor Irene, with several of her issues, and no, she did not say that it was millions of dollars, because you guys are very specific about taking little things out of context. It's the concerns, the issues that current residents, homeowners continuously have, whether it's more taxes, more dollars, and programs or funding being given to outsourced, outsources, people that are coming in from out of town, not residents that have been here for 30, 40, you know, years. And we're talking about from businesses to homeowners to regular residents. We come up here, we stress our concerns, you look at us with a blind eye, and it's like we're a public nuisance. Why? Because that's how you look at us? Because you're feeding your deep pockets, while everyone else is enjoying it? But you can walk outside your neighborhood, just like the gentleman said earlier, tons of people sitting, and he can't even go to sleep at night, and he's a hard worker? That's not, he's one of major, like maybe 100 people in this city, over 100, that can share the same testimony that he shared. Where's the concerns for the citizens? You know, we, all we're seeing is things being applied for investors. A hotel being built when you, when there's no affordable housing, it's not affordable. Affordable housing is meeting the median income. It's not affordable for the citizens of Lancaster. So, stop saying affordable housing. It's disgraceful for you guys to just continuously turn your eye towards hard-working citizens and taxpayers in Lancaster City who are being deprived of their resources.
Any additional comments from the public on the resolution? Mr. Dastra.
Tony Dastra, 700 Block, New Holland Avenue. I just want to thank Mr. Arroyo for being transparent about...
I just want to thank Mr. Royo for being transparent about the recusal, and I look forward to seeing this submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Med.
Aye.
Mr. Royo.
Abstain.
Mr. Cleese.
Aye.
Ms. Gregg.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz. Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye, thank you. We will now move into our second public comment period. Again, this is open for issues that were not previously on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and block of residence for the meeting record. Are there any folks wishing to make public comment in this period?
Tony Dastro, 700 block, New Holland Avenue. I guess I'm just riffing tonight. I have two subjects. One of them is just pretty direct. I've made this clear that I think that Lancaster City needs to start investigating rent control, and it's been stated by multiple people in this room on and off the dais that state action is needed for us to do that, and that, as far as I can tell, is just not a legal fact. I would like to see the council investigate this further, ask the solicitor, as is your right and ability to investigate this and provide a report to the public regarding the legality of rent control in third-class, I'm sorry, home rule municipalities like ours. I think the public deserves the full understanding of the nuances of what we can do and what we cannot do based off the court case Philly lost back in, wow, I've lost the date, I think it was 1955. The second thing, I've been thinking a lot about the terms welcoming versus sanctuary in our city. And while I do know that this is a really complicated issue right now, because on one hand, we don't want to say anything that makes us a bigger target, on the other hand, we are already a target. The federal government, if they want to, will crack down on us, sanctuary city or otherwise. So, when I think about this issue, the more I think about it, I'm just kind of left with, I'm going to use a Bible verse, Matthew 5, 14 and 15. I don't have it memorized, but it's the one where "you are the light of the world. You do not put a bowl upon a light and keep it hidden." I feel like that's what we're doing with calling ourselves a welcoming city and not progressing further to being a sanctuary city. There's people all over this country who are terrified. And while I understand there's only so much we can do within our powers as a government without breaking federal law, the Underground Railroad was not a government policy, and we can, we can help people. We really can. Thank you.
Any additional speakers for the second public comment period?
And I just wanted to add, the Spanish interpreter that was here for translation should have been translating via, is this being recorded? I'm not sure if it's, if it's being recorded. She should have been used, because she was asked to come for the Spanish-speaking people in Lancaster City, because they cannot make it to this, this, to a public comment or to even, you know, see what's going on here. But there are a lot of people that are concerned in our city, and they do, they are bilingual. So, I don't think it was fair for you to turn her away, nor give her a video recording or even have her sit somewhere so that she can address the public. This is a public setting, and it's just wrong. It's just wrong. I do want to also mention that, just making you aware of how many city employees, commuters, firefighters, police officers, taxpayers, disabled citizens in this city that have been discriminated on by Deneen Sarachi. This mayor has caused lots of discrimination towards citizens, hard-working taxpayers in this city. And it's shameful that she's still sitting there, having to go to court for all these accusations or offenses that she has towards regular decent people, turning a blind eye. It's just not right, and I think that she, she should not be fit to be mayor. I think she's the one that should stand down, because you've done enough.
Are there any additional speakers for the second public comment period? Hearing none, I will close it. We will move to our next item on the agenda, which is the report of the mayor, Mayor Sarachi.
Thank you very much, Counsel President. Construction season is upon us, if you hadn't noticed already. I wanted to briefly share the planned street improvements and paving list for the 2025 season. The spring, we will be doing Marshall Avenue, base repairs, Stadium Road to the city limits, Alley 131, Alley 10, Loop Road from Mannheim Pike to the Dead End, Fremont Street, Hershey Avenue to Charles Road, which I know has been long requested. Later in the summer, West Strawberry Street, King to South Water, East Mifflin Street, South Plum to the Dead End, Claremont Street, Stevens Avenue to South Franklin, North Marshall Street, between New Holland Ave to Reynolds, North Marshall Street, also East Walnut to Lehigh Ave. In the fall, we will be tackling Tennyson Drive, Buttercup Road to Longfellow Drive, Browning Road, Longfellow Drive, yeah, Browning Road, Longfellow Drive, and North Plum Street, East Chestnut Street intersection with selective mill and overlay repairs. Please note that the timelines may change due to weather conditions and other unexpected delays. Residents should always be mindful of posted signage during construction. And I just want to note that from 2018 to 2024, the City of Lancaster and our contractors have paved 25 miles of streets, about 20% of all city streets. In 2021, the city started paving streets ourselves rather than relying on contractors, and since then, we've been able to save just over a million dollars by doing the work in-house, and we've been able to pave more streets. Residents can use the current construction map that's available online to monitor where and when street improvements are happening near them. The map can be found at cityoflancasterpa.gov/current-construction. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor. And can I ask just a clarifying question, because I know that people may have this question, it comes up often. There's also, in addition to street improvements, UGI work going on across the city. Could you talk a little bit about that and who is doing that and how we know they're doing it?
Yes, so, UGI is an independent contractor. You'll often see trucks from Miller Pipeline that are working in neighborhoods. That information is also available on the construction page. They are responsible not only for trench repair after they dig holes in the street to replace the gas lines and meters and also along the sidewalks, but then they have a separate contractor that comes back and repairs the entire street as well as any cuts to sidewalk that they may have patched along the way. That work is completely separate from and is regulated by the Pennsylvania Utilities Commission, and I know that it has been a source of a lot of consternation for neighbors in terms of how they have done the trench repair, where they have placed gas meters, et cetera, et cetera. We continue to work with UGI, and as concerns are elevated to us, we work through our Construction Operations Division to be in touch with UGI to do our very best to advocate on behalf of the City of Lancaster and its residents.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Our next item on the agenda is Report of President of Council. I have two brief items this evening. One relates to the CDBG plan and a presentation we heard recently from our Office of Healthy Homes. I just want to put a really fine point for anyone who may have missed the last several meetings of council. Our Office of Healthy Homes told us in May that they have, over the course of this lead grant, as we call it, completed 403 lead remediations in homes in the City of Lancaster. The average costs of those remediations were about $17,500, and I can't think of a better way to invest the grant that we receive from the federal government than to make sure that those 403 homes are free of lead so that families can live in them safely, and that they were not burdened by additional rent increases because of costly remediation otherwise. So, I wanted to make sure I highlighted that this evening. Also, a reminder for members of council that we will meet next Tuesday, it's a third Thursday of the month, I believe, for us, to start our work on the administrative code. That is a presentation. That evening, those work sessions will be held here in city council chambers and plate council chambers at 6:00 PM, and those will be held on the third Tuesdays of the month through the summer. And finally, just happy Pride, happy Immigrant Heritage Month, and World Refugee Day, happy early Juneteenth. That concludes my report. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda are council comments. Are there any council comments this evening?
Counsel President.
Counsel Craig.
I would just like to piggyback on what Mr. Dastro said about, for anybody that has not seen the reenactment of Living the Experience at Beth Miami Church. I went in December, and I used to play Lydia Hamilton Smith in that reenactment 25 years ago, when they first started it. It has grown so much since then, and it is so good that I would recommend, if you have not gone to see Living the Experience, go see it. It's definitely Living the Experience.
Thank you very much, Counsel Craig. Any additional council comments?
Counsel President, if I may.
Counsel Ahmed.
I just want to thank the gentleman who came out and spoke about the importance of pedestrian and cyclist safety. As I spent my afternoon visiting a dear friend who's in the trauma unit, an LGH who was hit by a vehicle riding his bike this past weekend. As he remains in our thoughts and prayers, he also remains in our commitment to save streets and our commitment to Vision Zero, and I want to thank the other members of council for the commitment to pedestrian cyclist safety. It is serious, and we continue to see vehicles just simply have a disregard for people on bikes as well as people who are pedestrians. And we need to recommit to making sure that the streets are safe for all road users, no matter how you use them. And my dear friend is in my thoughts, and he remains in my commitment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Ahmed. Any additional council comments tonight? Hearing none, and having reached the end of our agenda, I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.